...here and counsel to a new year. It's been a year ago that I first sat in this seat and welcome each and every one of you again, or before, so it won't be take a lot of time now. This government is not shut down, so we will get right to business. Call, roll call please.
Yes, Bergen.
Here.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Angus.
Present.
McKenzie.
Here.
Rafi.
Here.
Cher.
Present.
Roll sign.
Here.
If you'd all join, stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll get right to the agenda. First item is approval of the agenda. Entertained a motion, please.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Some questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda as presented is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2018, the regular meeting minutes. Entertained a motion.
I move approval of the minutes from December 17.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval in the December 17 minutes, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Our guest councilperson for the month of January is Will Rannie. And Will, I would ask you to introduce yourself and say a few words about your family, where you work, and et cetera.
Sure. Yeah. My name is Will Rannie, and I've been in Waverly since 2011. We came here because my wife teaches at Workford College. She teaches engineering science. We have a daughter, Micah, and we have another one on the way in April, and so we're super excited about that. I run a small web development and marketing firm that specializes in working with churches and nonprofits. And I employ a couple people in town, and I have some employees that are remote that work in other states, or other places in Iowa.
Thank you. You have all the rights of a councilperson, ask questions, take part in discussions, except we will not let you vote. Time for public comments for any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to that, to a subject?
Good evening. My name is John Campbell. I reside at 10110th Avenue Southwest, Waverly, Iowa. I have two parts to my time up here. The first is, and if I'm misspoken about this, my understanding is that the Champion Ridge failed to complete their obligation. And knowing that, I'd like to know where the council's going, and that there be some type of clarification as far as funds that were donated. It came out in the paper on two different occasions that I have got at home, that the donations were for fairgrounds, yet the caption was put down for Champion Ridge. It's been my understanding from the get-go, these are two separate entities. So I feel that in fairness to the public, that those type of donations need to be clarified, and those that were earmarked for the fairgrounds be designated as such, and that we have a tally on exactly where that is at. So the first part is, you can take care of that however you want, when you want, but I think it needs to be done now. First, the year is long past.
I'll address that now, John. The Champions Ridge group is to make a presentation of the council as a whole, the January 21st meeting, two weeks from tonight. So...
Doesn't sound like good business to me, Mayor.
Well, that was, that's been set up for several weeks. The last time that they were here, they didn't, they didn't feel they had anything that they present tonight this quick, so.
Yeah, well...
But it will, all of your concerns will be addressed at that time.
Well, in all fairness, as you stated, the government's not shut down. Well, let's hope it's not fake news that we've also been hearing, but I heard nothing about that. That's been, that's been pretty hush-hush, and to me, that's not fair to the public. I have voiced my opinion several times. I have never been opposed to Champion Ridge. I have been opposed to the manner in which the council has elected to support it with the funds in the manner that they have, and now they're backtracking on a commitment and an agreement that the public understands was put out there, January 1.
Mayor, may I make a clarifying comment?
Yes, just now.
That might be helpful. I was thinking the same thing, John, even a couple of months ago, and then Champions Ridge folks pointed out that in a previous resolution, not just a couple of weeks ago, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, a previous resolution, the date that was identified for them to report was January 21st, so that was quite some time ago. They did have till the end of December, but they don't have to report to us until January 21st, and like I say, I didn't remember that detail of that resolution either, but they brought it to our attention. We went back and checked the minutes, and in fact, that's what it said. So I don't recall, I'm not sure I was at that meeting, I don't recall why that date was chosen, but it was. I think for them, give them some time after December 31st to pull their report together.
So what you're saying is that you actually extended that time to the 21st?
Not to fundraising.
No. Okay, so did they meet their commitment?
Going...
Did they meet their commitment for January 1?
My understanding is not.
That's my understanding. So that's why I'm asking, where is the council going? Their presentation means virtually nothing, in my estimation, because they've been before the council multiple times, and stating that they're not getting, and they've had many, many reasons for it. Now, I think this council needs to stand their ground and get this separated, and let's designate it as the Waverly Fairgrounds. For multiple years, if you had anything going on at the fairgrounds, that's where you told people it was at. The ball diamonds have been down there for years. When they talk about playing ball, they talk about it, down the fairgrounds. I think that needs to be cleaned up for the public to hear it. Second part to my public comments. Over six months ago, I came before this council and requested that you take a serious look at a speed reduction on 10th Avenue, which I live. I told you that there is a 40 mile an hour speed limit clear out to Norbees. Yet, past my house, it is 45. I have spoken to the police. They are not picking people up for speeding at 48, at 50, at 53. Quite honestly, a lot of that traffic is 55 miles an hour, and it's over that before they're ticketed. When you're taking it from two lanes down to one, in the short distance that you are, it does create a hazard. No one has came to me with any, we're looking into it, we can't do it, we're going to go ahead and complete the four lanes all the way out? No one's even spoken to me about it. I think six months is excessive when I was told we will look at this and give back to you. Not very happy with our elected officials. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you, John. Anyone else have comments about anything that's not on the agenda? Hearing one, none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by voice, vote, on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests a specific item be considered separately. Number one, pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adams Parkway Bridge and Horton Road repairs 2019 for $20,905.76. Pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly South Riverside Park Master Plan for $2,000. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for $3,565.50. A Class C liquor license for Big Ben Pool House. Class C liquor license for the Waverly Area Veterans Post. Class C liquor license for Joe's Nighthawk. Entertained a motion unless someone wants to pull an item.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Council discussion. All those in favor of the voice of the consent calendar, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven zero. Regular business. Item number one, Resolution 1901, a resolution approving a preliminary plat for residential development to be known as Wilmore's Woodland Estates, improperly located north of 9th Avenue Northwest and west of Adams Parkway. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-01, approving a preliminary plat for Carolyn Huber for construction of residential development to consist of 33 single-family lots and one outlot on 23.6 acres of property to be known as Wilmore's Woodland Estates, located north of 9th Avenue Northwest and west of Adams Parkway.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Council discussion.
I'm curious to know if there's actually room for 33 lots on that space. Anybody know?
Rachel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So from their preliminary plans, it looks like, yes, a lot of those lot sizes, especially along the Cedar River, are far larger than what is our minimum lot size in the R2 zoning district. However, in saying that, the planning of their stormwater requirements in the future could drastically change their site plan layout. However, once again, I think the 33 lots could fit probably regardless with the variety of lot sizes.
And while you're there, Rachel, do we have any concerns about flooding from the river into that proposed area?
So the bank is quite high there, where the floodplain usually does not encroach very far into the property. As this goes forth with, you know, development in the future, staff will work with the DNR and the applicant, and make sure that they're abiding by our floodplain requirements in regards to, you know, bluffs as well, so.
Thank you.
Can you also clarify the comment about, was it Lot 1 or Outlot 1, or does it matter, being dedicated or held for the school?
Yeah, so it is Outlot Number 1, and that is on the southwest side of the property there, just adjacent to that bigger piece. I believe that's about two and a half acres. So the person who's intended to own that property has stated that in the future, they would like to dedicate a piece of land to Cary Elementary School. Currently, we aren't, aren't going to allow such because we don't plan for landlocked parcels, and so at this time, that piece will basically be used as their private driveway into the property. However, at the time of development, you know, when road access gets to that piece from Adams Parkway, you know, we would allow the dedication of that piece if Cary Elementary would like it.
And which driveway are you referencing?
So that Outlot 1 is basically the driveway.
So the land itself, so there is no driveway?
Correct, correct. There's no official driveway into that piece on that site.
So I guess I'm confused. So Outlot 1 is 2.2 acres, and that...
Nope. So when you're looking at the preliminary plat, you're looking at every individual lot, and so Outlot 1 is that skinny piece connecting down to, I think it's 9th Avenue?
It's behind Cary School, and then it has a strip that comes down to 9th, right? And it goes back east further as well.
Right, so...
I think you should put it up on the screen.
I don't have it.
Because it's pretty confusing.
I don't, I don't have the sheet.
That's the preliminary plat. Not the final.
It's in, it's in, it's in, no, it's in, it's in.
And then going to, number one, this piece. Once we have a drive, a road coming into access. So this is actually part of Outlot Number 2, but it's called...
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yeah, but mine's different than that.
Nope.
This is Outlot 1.
Are you looking at the second agenda?
I didn't think...
So this would not be a road build right now.
So it's a little difficult because the surveyor is also outlining the three outlots in this preliminary plat, which are seen in your final plat later. However, in a preliminary plat, what we're looking at is actually all of these smaller lots here with the small numbers. So Outlot Number 1 in the preliminary plat is this strip right here. And that is, what's it say? About 27,000 square feet. So it comes right here. And in the staff report resolutions, basically it states that it will only be used as access for the property owner to that piece. They've stated, you know, if they want to come in and go fishing, you know, on their property, or something like that. Otherwise, when these roads get constructed, at that time, they could dedicate this to Cary Elementary. We don't want that first, because then we created a landlocked piece where now they can't access their parcel.
Can you outline the part for the school for us?
Right here.
So currently, it has a row of big trees on it. Are they going to take those trees out to put a road in there, or they're going to walk in there? Access?
So they're not going to put a road in there. I don't know if they're proposing a driveway or not. It would probably be, you know, a gravel driveway or something like that.
And so that's access, access for whoever owns Outlot 2?
Correct, but will not, and we put in the resolution, should not be used as an actual city street to access this development at any time. If that were to happen and this were to be replanned, we would want the street actually to come off of this road here and align. These offset streets are difficult for the city.
Right.
And are they also proposing access onto Adams Parkway, to the east?
So...
Those two streets?
Right, so this parcel has access here on Adams Parkway and here. And let's say, you know, a developer comes and purchases this Outlot 3 and wants to go by this plan that's been laid out. We would require construction of this road to the property line, so at that time, Outlot 2, you know, is developable as well.
Well, so are these outlots going to be developed simultaneously?
I highly doubt it.
So why are we looking at a plan of something that's not going to happen?
So this family, basically, you know, they own this parcel, and their mother passed away, and are trying to facilitate division of this piece amongst the heirs of the property. And originally, they came to city staff and just wanted to divide this into three pieces. We basically stated that staff would recommend denial of such. Why? Because this has already been zoned as R2, which has a density of about six units per acre. So if you're to split this piece into three pieces, you're basically saying that it's, you know, three houses could go on this compared to 30, or whatever, you know, it may be at six units per acre. Also, with our comp plan, you know, we like to promote infill development. We already have infrastructure that goes to this piece, and so we've already planned it out from a standpoint of it being developed with a higher density than three houses for 25 acres.
What kind of infrastructure is already there?
City sewer and water.
Through the whole back part?
Adams Parkway here, 9th Avenue, and then there's a connection over here that the Legion extended that could be used as well.
Why wouldn't city staff have entertained just dividing it? And, I mean, why, why deal with the R2 now when it appears no one really has a development plan?
Because once again, if you divide it into three pieces, someone can come in and pull a building permit and build on those properties. Now you have a house similar to what you see out on Airport Road in 218, where they've built in an area that we saw as commercial, let's say, and now it's there for 50 years. Similar situation of, we've already zoned this land as R2. We've seen it as a higher density than those three units in this spot. If we go against that, that may never happen on this property.
So there wouldn't be any opportunity for staff or council to come back at a later point in time and say, no, you can't build three houses on there, you can't build one house on there, because once, once it's a parcel, you can't do that? Is that correct? Okay.
So even though this is much denser than the rest of that area?
I don't believe it is.
I think if you look to the south...
Look to the south, but...
So R2 has a minimum lot size of, I think, 7150 square feet, which is about six units per acre. I think actually, the general lot size in what you're looking at in that area is a little bit larger, you're looking at about 8,000 square feet. So I don't think this is more dense. It's medium of those requirements. It's probably is less dense with the large lot sizes along the river.
Brian, to the south, they're almost exclusively single-family. There are three apartment buildings that I'm aware of, and two of them were at one time, single-family homes that were then turned into apartment buildings, and the rest are single-family, small, single-family homes to the south of this property.
So who designed this? Who drew this?
The property owners worked with Isaiah Reichs on this design, from HRS.
And what's going to happen to the Outlot 1, the 2.2 acre?
So currently, that is the original fountain step, and one of the heirs of the estate is living there, and plans to for the rest of their life. So basically, that will remain, and he will continue to live there, and then the other two pieces will be divided amongst the other two heirs.
So Outlot 2 really wouldn't be able to be developed unless, until Outlot 3 was developed?
Correct. Or once again, if Outlot 1 was in the future, but...
And put a street in. But right now, the only streets that are in the plan are coming off of Adams Parkway.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, this is prime development land. I was surprised from the first day that I moved to Waverly that someone, I understand that there, you know, family involved here that did not want to develop the land and wanted to stay on it, which is understandable, but, you know, I'm glad to see that property this close into downtown and with a great view overlooking the river, I would think that that's something that someone would be very excited about, try to develop. And I, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with lot size being too small. It fits within the requirements of R2, so.
Does staff have any concern about access off of Adams Parkway?
No. We've, you know, assessed this with our engineer and public works director, and haven't seen any major issues at this time. Of course, there'll be a little bit more insight that goes into it when, upon development and some final specs are made, so.
And any concerns from the neighbors on 9th?
I've heard nothing, no.
And it looked like planning and zoning voted against us and then voted for it. Did, did they have to, were there some dissenting?
So the planning and zoning meeting, one member recused himself from the conversation, and then one member voted no.
Abstained, or no?
That was in the final plat.
Oh, okay.
Voted no in the preliminary plat.
Okay.
And the rest voted yes. And that member, I don't know if you guys looked at all the planning commission meetings, but thought it was basically a little bit overreaching for us to require this. But, you know, once again, I did talk to him about our zoning code, what it's now under comprehensive, and what it says, and once again, this is our chance to have a voice in this property and how it's developed, so.
And from what you're saying, this is our only chance to have that voice?
Well, if they were to divide it into three pieces and someone pulled the building permit tomorrow, we couldn't do anything. Correct.
Yeah, the only way you'll have a view of the river off those back lots is to chop down all the trees.
Correct. So this also was a large discussion, I think I put it in your staff report, a very large discussion in our planning commission meeting was the preservation of those trees. They did not add it into the resolution, however, did want to make sure that you were aware of the conversation. One thing that I stated is that preservation, especially along that bank line, will be looked at mostly, I think, in regards to just stabilization of the bank with the DNR. But otherwise, at this time, there's nothing in our code that would prevent the clearing of those, so.
And it would be up to the developer?
Correct.
One way or the other.
Correct.
Another discussion on Resolution 1901, preliminary plat.
I guess the only question I have is, as it's plotted, I'm assuming the desire is to have a structure in each one of those lots, but being in R2, could they do some zero setback type townhouses that would spread across two lots?
So in R2 zoning district, they are allowed, whatever you guys refer to as twin homes, and the lot sizes do accommodate a lot to provide that. It doesn't need the minimum lot size for twin homes as well. And once again, that would be kind of the developer's plan, that's what they're proposing.
Another discussion.
I guess my, you know, I think, I do think it's important for us to have a voice in how things are developed, and I can understand not wanting to have that piece of land taken up with just three homes, but I also think it's, I think it's difficult to vote on something if what we're looking at probably isn't going to happen as it's drawn, and it doesn't sound to me like the owners of the land are planning to do this together, from what you're saying. And so you could potentially have very different developments in each of these sections. Is that correct?
Um, no.
And who looks at that?
Right. So you're absolutely right in saying that the pieces will be owned separately upon approval of the final plat. However, in our resolutions and our development agreement, it basically continues to bring it back to the preliminary plat. So let's say these pieces are owned by three individuals, and one person comes in and wants to develop Outlot 3, so on the east side. They have to abide by the general layout in the preliminary plat. If they were to want to change that, they would have to come in for a preliminary plat amendment, where basically, we would go through this process all over. And at that time, if they were very serious about development, they would of course require their final specs immediately. But in doing that with each pieces like we do now, we make sure that it will align and fit with the property that it's adjacent to for the future development of that piece as well.
So Rachel, is it your impression that the individuals who will be owning Outlot 2 and Outlot 3 are in basic agreement that this is a good plan, that they will, they will be supporting?
So the individuals plan to own Outlot 1, 2, and 3 all here tonight, which I think is a good sign. And I know this has kind of been a rough deal for their family, you know, in a state practice, but, you know, I've talked to them, and we've looked over the agreements and everything. practice, but, you know, I've talked to them, and we've looked over the agreements and everything, and they are willing to sign the development agreement. And so I think they're on board with that, especially with the final goal of, you know, splitting into three outlots.
Guess I'm a little confused. Isn't this the standard practice when somebody has a large parcel that they want to develop? Don't they usually bring this forward? We act on it, not knowing exactly what the final spec? I mean, we're acting on something later tonight where it was plotted back in the '90s, and we didn't know exactly how that was going to be developed and...
I think normally, though, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have seen the equivalent of the final plat, right, before coming to us?
So the majority of the time, yes, but you're absolutely right. You guys reviewed a part of the tag-along trail, which is on the golf course property and was divided into many phases, and I know that was approved in the '90s as well. And so at that time, they had just a general layout of what that would look like. And then at the time of development, what you guys reviewed were the final specs for all of that, which is a similar situation as to what we'd be looking at for this. And it was kind of a situation that was faced in the recession regardless. You know where I came from, things were planned out, and we figured they'd be done, and that hit, and 10 years later, either maybe the product type wasn't what was going, or rules changed where final specs did have to be updated accordingly.
I guess I could see that land being developed very differently, too. Just everybody's going to have their own view of that, just because it is so beautiful. But I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, Rachel, what you're trying to do is to, as city staff, trying to remain true to the comprehensive land use plan and the zoning that has already occurred, and you're assuming that there was some longer-range planning involved in that, and you're trying to honor that, is what I hear you saying?
Correct. I'm analyzing our city code with this property and presenting it to you in that way.
So I guess ultimately, it doesn't matter if the owners of Outlets 2 and 3 agree that this is a good plan?
Well, they have to sign the documents.
Yeah, but I mean, you didn't really answer the question. You just said they're here, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
They have to sign the document together, and after that...
They don't have to develop it?
Right.
Or do they?
Yes.
I mean, not in any amount of years. No, they can sit on it for a very long time, and 20 years, and someone may take that piece.
Just related, and to help me understand, the Airport Road home, why did you say that that would sit there for 50, that would sit there for 50 years? I didn't follow that.
I think it was just in my opinion, that house is very expensive and very gorgeous, and this, you know, probably a million-dollar house sitting there, and I know there was some lost conversation, I wasn't here at that time, between the county and the city and, you know, rezoning that piece. And so when a house, any house specifically, maybe that house, is built, it's hard to take it back. You know, it's going to be there for a very long time, and so...
How large is the property that that's on?
I think it was 40 acres.
Oh, okay. So it's a parcel.
I think they originally intended to divide the piece off, but that's kind of when we got it, and, you know, stated they would not be able to do that, so I do think it's on 40 acres.
That's a corridor specific for commercial, as identified, and you have a residence slap right in the middle of it.
Yep.
And that's kind of what we were trying to prevent here, is three houses on this big, beautiful area to be developed. And now what? You have to work around. We see it off 20th as well. Some of the acreages that are there now, as we're looking to try and establish that to the west and develop around them, so to speak.
Ready for a vote? Roll call both, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wlottstein.
Yes.
Resolution 1901, approving preliminary plat for development to be known as Wilmer's Woodland Estates is approved 7-0. Number 2, Resolution 1902, a resolution approving the final plat and development agreement for Carolyn Huber for Wilmer's Woodland Estates on property located north of Ninth Avenue Northwest and west of Adams Parkway. Entertained a motion?
I'll move approval of the resolution as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second of council discussion. This is basically the same plat.
Correct. This is the process of basically splitting into those three outlots for individual ownership. However, once again, still having the agreement and the resolution stating that it shall be developed in accordance with that preliminary plat that you guys just...
The development agreement has some things in there that will cause it to come back to staff and/or the council for approval.
Correct.
Because there are no streets, dimensioned, infrastructure of any kind, stormwater runoff, so that always to come back for review.
Correct. So similar thing lies that tag-along development, the specs should be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission and Council.
So in a situation like this in general, what are their options, if any are there, besides parcels and outlots?
To divide it into three pieces?
None?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Can I get you to explain a little bit of process as to why we have one motion on the preliminary plat and one motion on the final plat, that this couldn't just be done all at once?
So usually, they're divided because of time. So sometimes the preliminary plat is done, and they want to basically get a good judgment call from you guys as to your thoughts on it and if it looks good. And then they go forth in the final plat, and that's when you see a lot of the final specs. So they're spending a large sum of money in developing the engineering, cross-sections, and everything like that. Also, at that time, you may see for a larger development phasing plan or something like that, where, you know, they're finally getting their funds for this project and taking it into chunks. And so usually, it's just split up like that for the time portion of those pieces.
Any other discussion? Roll call both, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wlottstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes. Resolution 1902, approving final plat and development agreement for Wilmer's Woodlands Estates, carrying 7-0. Item number 3, Resolution 1903, resolution denying an appeal by Stephen and Dee...
Bright Rights.
Bright Rights, thank you. And to affirm staff's decision to deny driveway access from Lot 5, Bridalboro Estates to Highway 3. Entertained a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 1903 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second of council discussion. Dr. Bright Rights is here to answer any questions you might have.
When, on your map here, I've driven past that property a couple of times here since the agenda came out, and where is it that you are actually proposing for this driveway to reach Highway 3? Is it on the east side of the lot, or the west side of the lot, or the middle of the lot?
If you, if you look at lots 3 and 4, it will be 30 foot to the west from the property line.
30 feet to the west?
30 feet west of the property line.
Okay. I don't have my...
That would be the center of the drive.
All right. Yeah, I couldn't see the small numbers here on this.
If you look at the next page, it shows you a better picture.
Oh, yes, thank you. And the purpose for the denial of this is because of safety? Is that, I mean, I'm asking whoever, whatever office is involved in this, Mike, I don't know if this was a city engineer, but the purpose for having this regulation or this design standard to have just one driveway for these five lots, the purpose of that is for safety or for traffic control? What's the reason behind it?
Belle or James?
What we were looking at is what was planned back in '92 when they did the plotting. Those five lots were along adjacent to Highway 3, which was a state highway at that time, and there was one location where it would be across from 12th Street Southeast on the south side. Plus, the topography of the land is such that it's very steep on those other three, the east three lots. So they came up with a plan of providing for a common driveway and then providing an easement for access to the other ones to come into it. Actually, Lot 1, that's adjacent to First, or First, 12th, would be able to access off that if they chose, or they could go, I guess there's no easement for them, they would have to go off First. Because you're going to, I keep saying that, sorry, 12th Northeast. So there's only four lots that would actually have a common driveway. There's two that were built that way already, and they were built with duplexes, and this was actually plotted as an R2. These five lots were plotted R2 instead of R1, like the rest of the subdivision, with the idea that most people wouldn't want to be adjacent to the highway, and if they did make them adjacent, they would be what was basically done, and they did the duplexes instead of single-family dwellings. Now, it's still a beautiful area, it still has a lot of trees, it'd be high up on the, it'd be up on the hill, so it'd be a nice view, but it's still adjacent to a state highway and across the street from a factory. So I think that was why they did the R2. They designed the restrictive covenants to basically make the city a party to those so that they could enforce those. For that reason, I think, just to make sure that they could, the city would have the right to say, "We want to stay with the covenants and not let you have more than one driveway for those four lots."
But the purpose for having only one driveway, that's what I'm trying to get at. Was it for aesthetics? Was it for safety? Was it for economic?
I think it's a combination of the type of driveway that would have to come off those other lots on the east end, or in the west end. Those two lots would have fairly steep driveways coming in. There's water, there's a waterway that comes along behind the, in the right-of-way, and then there's an intake right there. So basically, the way it, the easement can work is that they can be above that with the driveway coming across and then down to the existing driveway. It was basically, you know, good design standards, and I think I included that in the packet. You talk about municipal Iowa access standards. When you have a state highway, you don't want to put five driveways in a row, if you can help it. It's not the way you develop an arterial coming into your community. And so I think that was the idea, that there was a combination of things.
What's the speed limit there?
I think it's still 45. I think it goes to 35 at the top of the hill.
If you look at a part of the staff document, when you took it, section 410 of the handbook, it does read, "A rural residential driveway as long as arterial can reduce its traffic carrying capacity and lower the safe speed. It might be easier and cheaper for the developer to subdivide the frontage rather than constructing arterial roads, but the public loses when as a result is unsafe conditions, congestion, lower speed limits, and eventually need for costly road improvements." And that was what was cited as part of the staff summary in there as to one of the reasons it was developed to put a single in and out versus multiple driveways in that stretch of property.
So the original plan would have been to bring a driveway around in front and across to meet up with that other driveway?
To continue it to the west.
And the owner is proposing to go straight down the hill to the street?
Correct.
Because it is very steep there.
And then the next lot is still owned by the owner that sold the lot, and they would have to have an agreement about maintenance and construction of that common driveway if they were to use that common driveway.
When you say common driveway, do you mean that access road?
Right, the access going over to the other driveways?
Yeah.
Because you have to cross over the other lot with your, with your access easement to get to the driveway. That was not provided for, and that's unfortunate. They didn't, they just said they have, that this owner of that Lot 5 can cross Lot 4 to get to 3, and then have access to that driveway, but it doesn't provide for any requirement or provision for how they would share the cost if you're going to cross that lot with a driveway.
Because you'd have to, that would be at the owner's cost to build that, in general quote, driveway.
Generally, that's a, that would be some kind of a shared expense. If you're designing this from the start and you're creating the way that you really want it to happen, you design a way to require them to contribute to the cost of constructing, whatever they have to construct, and the cost of maintenance for the, whatever surface is put on that driveway. And that's where, that's where you sort of get a homeowners association for those several lots that would share a drive.
So the private owners of the property, shared among them? You're not talking about city share?
Right, share among them, right. I mean, that's, that's the best way of doing those kinds of things so that they don't have this kind of issue that comes up later with regards to whether they are going to, like, the lot in between that's still there and sold to somebody else, whether they just put their driveway to the driveway that they've already created without contributing to that cost. I mean, that doesn't seem equitable, in my opinion, either. But that's one of those things that should be worked out, and especially when the, the owner of that lot that sold it to them is still the owner of that lot.
The adjacent lot?
Right.
And so at the time of purchase, were you aware that...
Can I, yeah?
Yeah.
My piece of property does not have an easement. There is no easement on Lot 5, so that does not come up on a title search. There is no easement for Lot 5. And the way I understand it is the city, at that point in time, I've been told several stories, the city at that time asked for an easement so they could put a furnished road in, as they did on West Bremer Avenue. Well, now, if they're willing to put the furnished road in, I don't need a private drive. And as far as the private drive, it meets, and it meets all of the state of Iowa's standards and specifications. If you look at the very last page, there is the state engineer who came up and looked at it. He gave me his permission to give his card if any of the council members wanted to contact him. The property there is the state's right-of-way, not the city's right-of-way, but it is a joint jurisdiction which requires both the city and the state. The state is in favor of it. When I first bought the property, no, it didn't come up because it's not, like I said, there is no easement. So I met with the state, went down to the city to get a permit to put a driveway in. I got told I couldn't have a permit. At that point in time, I wasn't really told why. Then I met with the city attorney, and I met with Mike Cherry for approximately 10 minutes. I got told, "I can't have a driveway because if we give you a driveway, we've got to give everybody a driveway." And then, right after that comment, if you turn to page, your fourth page in your packet, you'll see where I have this circled. Then after I was told, "If we give me a driveway, we've got to give everybody a driveway," then I was shown this picture. "We can't have this happen again." This particular property has four driveways, three on Bremer Avenue and one off another. So we can't have that again because the city made a mistake here and gave three driveways to one particular piece of property. But we, plain and simple, you know what? I came to Waverly, I chose Waverly. My wife and I have shopped here for a long time. I'm from Charles City. I could do my business in Charles City, but we like Waverly, okay? We chose to come here, build a home, and finish out the rest for years. You know, if the city, I don't, I don't have to have a private drive. I don't. If the city wants to put in the furnished road, I'm paying for it, you know? I don't... I don't really believe the landowner had any intentions of a private citizen paying for and paving a 230-foot-long drive, 20-foot wide. I really don't believe that. I'm not asking for anything other than a driveway, that's it. I'm not asking for an extra-wide driveway, I'm not asking for a curvy one. There are standards and specifications the state requires for a driveway. And yes, it is mentioned, that is a specifically steep piece of property. If you look at the front page, you'll see why I chose that piece of property for the home I want to build there.
The driveway will not be steep, though, are designed?
No, it will meet exactly what the state requires, exactly, which is a 10% or less grade. It will be excavated out so it meets the grade. The culvert in the driveway will be exactly what it's supposed to be. I'm not asking for anything unreasonable. I'm not asking for anything I don't think any of you would ask, want. There's a driveway to your home, that's it. As far as excessive wear, I spoke, when I saw that, I spoke to Jess Ellingson, the state engineer again, and he said, "Excessive wear?" He said, "I think that 20-foot snow blade we drop on the highway does a lot more wear than what you'll do." It, like I said, it meets all the city, or the state's requirements. I'm committed, I'm financially committed to this. The easement didn't show up because the easement isn't on my property, it's on the joining property. I have no choice, I'm committed, I have to take this as far as I have to go. I was, I met several times with city officials, and the last time it was, "We'll get something worked out, we'll get something worked out," only to turn around and be stabbed in the back. Now, one thing I am going to mention, I met with, finally met with your mayor, and I'll tell you what, you guys got a good mayor. You got a man that does care about your community and wants to see you prosper. Now, I know you got Warburg College, and you get a lot of revenue off them, but I'm looking at a $200 and some thousand-dollar house. I don't know the trickle-down effect, but it's going to make somebody some money. And I know Spahn and Rose Lumber Yard wants my business. I eat at several restaurants here in town, they like my business. I know you're looking at $5,000 a year revenue on taxes, you know? I bought $2,000 in tires in 2018, not in Charles City, here in Waverly. I could have bought them in Charles City. I come to Waverly and shop, you know? I like it here. And to be honest, I'm willing to work with somebody, but nobody's willing to work with me, you know? Do you not want me here? If you don't want me here, I'll tell you what, there's a very easy way to get rid of me. Buy my land, and I'll go. I'll sign a contract, I'll never spend a dime in this community again. I just want access to my property, fair and square, nothing, you know? I'm not asking for anything special.
Maybe one point of clarification. I guess I'm understanding maybe why it's not showing up on the title work for Lot 5, because...
There is no easement on Lot 5.
Sir, if I could just take a second here to get my thought out. As you look at that, those properties after they were originally plotted, it certainly implies the intent was to have a common driveway feeding all three of those lots. Now, it doesn't have to cross Lot 5, your lot, because it's the end one, but I guess the question is, from my understanding, some of your concern is that you feel you need to pay for the construction of this common drive across a lot and a half, or two lots. I'm wondering if that's truly the case? If there's already a stipulation saying this is going to be a common drive, the landowner has sold the last lot in sequence, why isn't he responsible for connecting the drives?
I'll just tell you that the reservation of easement, it basically says, "For the mutual benefit and convenience of themselves, heirs, assigns in the city of Waverly, and all grantees named in Lots 3, 4, and 5 of vital spur states," to provide mutual, to provide access and mutual ingress and egress over and across the following described premises. And then it lists the easement across Lots 3 and 4. And the equitable contribution to that, this is why we have abstracts read by lawyers who read the documents that are involved in that, because they would see this kind of thing and point out that that's what it's there for. You know, whether it's on the plat or not, it, the easement goes to the property line of the lot, and was there for that purpose. And the discussion we've always had very consistently is, if we give a driveway to Lot 5, then Lot 4 is going to want a driveway, Lot 3 has a driveway, Lot 2 can do their own driveway, and Lot 1 will want their own driveway, and we can have five driveways in a row in this limited space. This is what we tried to avoid in 1992, it's still a good, it was still a good decision that was made back then to require that.
I guess along that lines, the three other drives that were pointed out on the other side of the road, those were at one point, three individual.
They're three different properties.
So each property had their own driveway? It's not that the city allowed one property to have three driveways?
That's what it started out to be. I think one now owns a bigger portion, but that was how those driveways got created.
I would also like to state that on Highway 3, there is approximately 156 private drives, 72 business drives, and 39 driveways that go to absolutely nothing but bare land. But my drawing is going to be excessive wear on the highway.
What does that mean?
I don't know what that means either.
Not sure what the point of that is. That's, I don't understand, you know?
We didn't use that term, excessive wear on the, I mean, you have to enter the highway, whether you go from your driveway or the mutual driveway.
Well, to me, the only issue here is really the safety issue. And like I said, in looking at it, I have a real hard time trying to see where having a driveway in that location for residents that might have, you know, two or three cars a day turning onto or off of Highway 3 is going to create a safety issue. The easement is a permissive easement, it's not mandatory. Gentlemen, forgive me for not trying to mispronounce your last name, but, you know, they have the right to build a driveway across Lots 3 and 4, but they're not required to build a driveway across 3 and 4, as I can see it. The only problem with them building their driveway is the planning standards that say we don't want a whole lot of driveways on Highway 3, which I can understand. I mean, I think that's a good standard, not to have a lot of individual driveways on Highway 3. But I think in this situation, looking at the way that this gentleman's property is situated, and, you know, the length of time and the problems dealing with the lay of the land over there, trying to build a driveway all the way from Lot 5 to Lot 3 where you could access the highway, particularly since there's nothing on Lot 4, it's a totally undeveloped lot, I think it's just totally unreasonable. I am really inclined to approve this. I think it probably is a situation that we may not see again.
Approve the denial or approve the request?
Approve the request.
Okay, vote against the denial.
Vote against the denial. We may have a situation at Property 4, Lot 4 is ever developed. That's a little bit different story, because it's right next to the access driveway. So I think this is a unique situation, and I don't think that there's enough, there's enough of a problem with the city that we should prevent this driveway from going in.
How far is the nearest driveway going in either direction, from where he's proposing?
From where I want the driveway, it'll be approximately 260 feet to the east. And I would guess it's probably 300 to 400 feet to the west, which is a church.
It's a straight, it's a straight section of the highway. I mean, the highway runs absolutely straight in that spot, so there's really no sightline problems.
Is it just to the east of the curve?
No, no.
The state requires 300 feet of clear view.
Okay.
And that's, that's what they require. And I met with this Jess Ellingson, the engineer, and actually, he sent to planning zoning all the information, that they were in favor of it, they're okay with it, it meets their requirements, everything.
I drove by there, and I assume, and I'm having trouble, somebody said it's straight right there, but unless I had the wrong property and view, it starts to curve pretty quickly.
Probably about 200 feet west.
West.
Yeah, 200 to 300 feet west, right, right just before the church drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for my curiosity, is this where the road is still three lanes, or is it down to two lanes? Is there still a center?
It's two-lane with a turning lane.
So there's a center, so there's three lanes, as we call it?
Did you see, there's a picture in the packet?
Okay, so it's three lanes.
And you really see that right to the left is where the driveway would come out?
Can you show where the driveway would come out?
It's on your, it's in your, it's...
The packet?
It's on Page 6 of the 23 pages. There's a picture facing to the east. CMI would be on the right, in the Terex Office Building. To the left is the, is the slope up the hill. And that's about where the driveway would be, probably a little bit past where that for-sale side?
So for example, if you were turning left into the driveway, you would be able to pull over into the center lane?
If you wanted, and that's something the state engineer mentioned, that that would actually be a benefit, that center turning lane.
I guess, I'm kind of with Rod on this, that you look at East Bremer, and you go further east out towards Star Motel and also that area, there's a series of homes, five, six driveways, looking at it from the picture here on that north side of Bremer, fairly close to each other right in a row, as far as the housing development. Certainly, as you get into downtown, you've got driveways and cross streets coming across Bremer regularly. I don't, I guess, it seems to me more of a hardship to require them to connect to the access driveway than to allow them to put a driveway onto Bremer where there's a three-lane road, where there's a, so there's a turning lane in one direction, and there'd be just another driveway coming the other way, which...
It's not a turn lane, it's the, it's a hatched middle section, and the turn lane starts farther down. It doesn't mean they can't use it to turn, that's what we tell people with the hatching, that if you're just turning into a driveway, you can use that hatching to do that.
Right, so it has the effect of being a turn lane.
But if your only other option is to build a road, build a driveway across the lot next to you, what if they develop that lot? Your road's going to get torn up by their construction equipment, and then you have to build another one.
Well, they'd have to repair that, if they, if you, because you have an easement, you have a right to have your drive across theirs. So if they damaged your driveway, you'd have to repair that.
So Bill, where do you, or James, or staff in general, I mean, where do you disagree with what the state engineer has reported?
So the state engineer, it does not object. There's a difference between being in favor of something and not objecting to something. They know that it's a dual, a dual jurisdictional decision to make in this right-of-way. The city has more of a stake in this than the state does. You know, those houses that are out farther out, they were all built in the country, keep in mind. They weren't built inside the city of Waverly, they were built when there was no city limits. What we try to avoid is repeating what's happened in the past, so that we just line up the driveways all the way out. And that's not good planning. You know, if we let it happen here, I'm guaranteeing it will happen on Fourth, Lot 4, it'll happen on maybe Lot 2.
Would those have to be approved?
But they, we would have no basis to deny those because of allowing this one.
Even from a safety point of view, where you would have them a lot closer together?
So if we had two instead of, or so three is worse than two, I don't know that I can make that justification. I think we've made the, the idea that one for all five or all four is better than, is the best we can do for this property to develop.
So what's the, what's the alternative for Mr. Pratt-Coitz, then?
He needs to, he can build the extension across Lot 4 to get to Lot 3, and use the mutual driveway as it's provided for. I feel, I feel bad, because I wish the seller would have told them what was going on with this, because that would have been the time to negotiate that particular cost factor of crossing to get to 3.
And is that more expensive than building his drive?
I don't know, I don't know what, you know, what it's going to take to build the drive. In order to get the, a incline that isn't a very steep incline, it's going to be a fairly substantial undertaking, I believe. And I don't know what kind of, because that's a pretty steep bank there, and it goes across the waterway at the bottom, so you're going to have to then take it across and put a culvert in for the waterway that goes the back of the curb behind the sidewalk. There's actually a waterway back there that takes water off the hill.
Yep. So have you, have you gotten an estimate of what the price difference will be between building your driveway and building the driveway across?
Since it's an HOA community, it has to be a paved driveway, whether it's paved or blacktop, roughly $60,000 to $100,000. 230 feet, 20-foot wide.
And how about? To go across the lot next to you?
To go across.
How about just the regular driveway?
That'll be about $5,000.
And so it is an HOA, it's an HOA community?
It's an HOA community, requiring, and requiring that your driveway be paved or blacktop.
And is there any provision to meet with the other property owners to discuss sharing?
Keep in mind that Lots 3 and 2 are gravel.
Right, and they're not supposed to be.
So they haven't enforced it on them in how many years?
You know, the whole purpose of this when we started was for staff to try and enforce the plat as it sat with the driveways as they were setting. I spoke to the gentleman at the time when I met with the mayor, and I passed the same topic on then. It is not the city's issue that this was missed during the closing, or no attorneys were involved that reviewed the documents, or all of a sudden this comes up, we've already purchased a lot. That is between the seller and the buyer, and the real estate agent that may have been at hand that is not on the city. Now, after the fact, you come to the city to fix this problem, I don't know that that's fair either. It was plotted for a reason this way, nothing has significantly changed, Terex is now CMI. The road's the same, it's still a state highway, it's still the same trajectory. I do believe you will set a precedence, in my opinion, by allowing this to happen, whether it be in a commercial, shared driveway in another part of the city, or other shared driveways that exist as well. If we don't abide by our own plat, then why do we plat it? We just went through this entire discussion, the first two items tonight. How in-depth was the plating? Does it matter, does it not? We try to hold that very thing. This was platted in 1990, and the first two properties complied with it. I'm just, you can vote similarly as you want to, and staff will abide, but I just caution you, when you do this, it will set a precedent, whether they'd like to think it will or not. It's going to be very difficult to deny someone else with a similar issue, whether it's commercial property or residential property with a similar precedent.
Kind of the root of my concern, can we by resolution supersede a plat and a reservation of easement?
We can, by indicating we won't enforce it. In fact, this is a staff decision to deny the driveway, and it's a staff decision that ultimately has to be, has to abide by the council's decision.
Say that again.
It's a staff decision in order to deny placement of a driveway. But that's appealable to the council, which means the council's the ultimate arbiter.
Which is what this is.
Right, of whether we enforce this or not. That's why this appeal is to you at this point.
I think we're going to set a precedent either way. I think you set a precedent that you don't want to make exceptions for each driveway, but you also set a precedent that you're not necessarily welcoming to people who want to move to town and build a house on a piece of property. But I agree, I think it's a difficult situation, and I, but there's several things that haven't been enforced within that development.
But the plating of the driveways is not one of them, to this point.
But they're supposed to be paved.
Correct, but the location of them and the way they're constructed, other than the surface top, you can leave it gravel, then, if we're not going to enforce that part of it, but the actual way they were built and how they cover the ground has been enforced, and the first two properties have been...
That will be enforced, because I'll become a member of the HOA committee, and I'll see if it's enforced, because it's part of the...
And the city doesn't enforce those kinds of...
Times are changing.
Those kinds of covenants? Our concern was that you pave through the right-of-way, which in fact, that is paved through the right-of-way, and that's where it stops, at the sidewalk. So we would require it to be paved from the sidewalk to the street. We cannot require that they put pavement or blacktop on their driveway.
We can't, but they can in the homeowners association.
Yeah, and it is supposed to be paved, and I have actually spoke with them about it. Why wasn't, they said, "Well, at the time, we were all so mad about the duplexes being there." there."
So you're part of the larger Bridle Spur homeowners association or just sort of the large?
The Bridle Spur homeowners association, yes.
I mean, I do, I mean, I'm, I'm torn about this too because, I mean, I do think it's a, it's, it is a hardship. I mean, it seems, it seems to me, I mean, along the lines of what, what Rod said, you know, I, I can, I can kinda see that. That's why I keep wondering if there isn't a way to not have it be a precedent or some other solution.
Well, generally speaking, if, if you were to do a board of adjustments appeal of this kind, of this nature, which this can't be this way, cost is not, doesn't justify that.
Right. Why isn't this a board of adjustment thing, by the way?
Yet we've continued to do that in this town over the years.
It's not apparent of width, but location and board of adjustment would be width.
Right. And so, cost is not the, is not an exception. I mean, it was designed to be this way.
But it's also the empty, I mean, the, the, part of the hardship too is the, the, the fact of the empty lot in between. Right? I mean, it would be perhaps a little bit different if it were immediately adjacent to the, you know, as far as the road has gone, but now you're skipping over one.
But the lot was purchased from the person that owns that lot. See, this could all have been taken care of had the seller made known that this was gonna be required and that they would have made an arrangement at the time.
So, so in that vein, I have a question. Does, does our purchaser here have any legal recourse against that person?
I don't know. I don't know what was represented, I don't know, I mean, it, that's a buyer seller relationship. I'm just saying that should have been, that should be explored because I think that there are disclosure requirements about easements that would affect the value of your property.
He is correct, but like I said, there was a title opinion done, there was an attorney involved. There is no easement on lot five. The only easements on lot five are utility easements and drainage. That's why it didn't show up until after you purchased it and you received your abstract indeed. Then you find out.
But I did read the language that's very specific about mutual ingress and egress.
At convenience, and it's no convenience to anyone, the city, the homeowners, anyone.
But that, what you read, Bill, where was, was that available?
It's in the abstract. It's in their abstract. It's part of the...
Would that have been available to Mr. Braggkroitz at the time, if the attorney would have had that?
Correct. That was my point to start with. Because it was missed, should we as a city then correct it on our end? And that's kinda where we were heading with this, is staff.
You know, we're doing a lot of talking here about precedent and I think that's legitimate because we don't want to set a precedent that's gonna lock us into the future, but when you're setting precedent, you also have a situation where if another situation comes up, there are distinguishing characteristics that will distinguish that particular instance from this one. And I think there's enough going on here that just because somebody else says, "I wanna put in a driveway," there are things that are, factors that are happening here that are probably not gonna be happening in that situation. I think this is probably something that can be distinguished very easily from the next time that something like this comes up. I'm not at all afraid that we're gonna set a precedent that we're never gonna be able to walk away from because this is not something that is, is, is going to come up very often. I mean, even if you're looking at lot four, lot four is immediately adjacent to lot three. They, they put in a 50-foot driveway and they're there. You know, this is gonna require a driveway to be put in all the way across another lot from a, that, that, there's gonna be no financial assistance from the owner of lot four to put in that driveway. I mean, this should have really been taken care of when this thing was originally platted, that had a, a street in there or, or something of that kind rather than a common driveway. I think what we're trying to do here is, is correct something that happened in the 1990s that was an oversight. If, if these properties have been developed, one, two, three, four in line, we may not be having this discussion, but because we're skipping a property, you know, we're, we're having a situation here that is, I think, unique and I'm not all that concerned about setting a precedent.
But I think what Bill is saying in part, if I understood him correctly, is that if we supported staff's position, decision on this, which is based on a lot of good reasoning as well, that that might still lead to a cost sharing discussion for the, for the drive. I mean, that's speculation, but yeah.
But how firm is that?
Right. I'm just trying to understand everybody so that I can, so that I can make a decision myself.
Well, and I, I would also point out that if you were to develop lot four, the driveway doesn't go all the way to the edge of the property, that there'd still be some additional frontage road that would need to be added just to connect any, any hypothetical property at lot four to that driveway. So if we approve this, we would have that same discussion for lot four, you know, do they have to pay that additional length to connect up? I think that our purchaser here is completely justified in being frustrated at having to pay this additional length of driveway to connect up, but I feel like his frustration is misplaced at the city and should be placed at the seller or the lawyer who failed to catch this problem when the documents were signed.
I think there's a lot of frustration and enough to go around to certain people. I don't think you should reserve it just for the lawyer.
Lawyers are good for that.
Honestly. And who's to say they have to pave the driveway from lot four? They could have a dirt path like the other people because no one's enforcing it.
Right. I think the...
You drive across the grass, so...
I, I have great sympathy with not wanting to create a precedent that you aren't going to like to, want to live with later on. Having heard it, everybody's got to say, I have to say, I think, and maybe Rod said this better than I can, you can, if there are extenuating circumstances, I think you can make an exception to what would otherwise be a bad precedent and, and use that when the next issue arises and say, "Well, this is why we did it in this case, there were perhaps pretty good reasons for it." I guess I wouldn't totally worry about making a bad precedent, although I, I do think that the precedent, the rule of bad precedent ought to be observed when we can do it. I, I have some real sympathy with, with the buyer here.
Carla, would you refresh the motion in seconds to make which?
I don't have that.
Motion there.
Well, I was certain that there was a motion in a second.
I know I was working with Rachel from the previous...
I think I had the second, but I remember who had the first.
I think Rod moved.
Rod moved.
I, I will own the, own the resolution if no one else does.
I know it wasn't I. I'm not trying to get out of it, but I, I didn't move it.
No, I'm sure it was moved or I wouldn't have opened it up for discussion.
Sure, I moved the one before that.
Yeah.
Just making up for the main...
If, if no one owned it, I'll, I'll take ownership of it, so.
Well, it'll be in the recording.
Yeah, yeah, I'll know after. I didn't know it was important to Dean to know now.
I think, I think maybe the mayor was asking to have the motion recited again so we understand what we're voting on.
Oh, I can certainly...
I, I had asked the mayor because I did not have it down either in my notes who would move it or circulate it, so.
I, I would just ask the mayor, however, to clarify, when we take this vote, if you vote in favor of the resolution, you're voting against the request of the homeowner and then the opposite is also true. So we understand what we're voting on here.
Are you, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1903, a resolution denying and appealed by Stephen and Dee Braggkroitz and to affirm staff's decision to deny driveway access from lot five of Bridle Spur Estate Highway three. So a yes vote will be to deny the request, a no vote will over, will give the applicant permission to put driveway in. Roll call vote, please.
Kengis. McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
No.
Share.
No.
Wattstein.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
No.
Resolution 1903 is defeated by a vote of three yes to four no. So that should allow access for, allow the driveway, that's why...
We're looking forward to becoming supporting citizens of Waverly. Thank you.
Very good. Move on to resolution 1904, a resolution approving acceptance of a, of a deed for lots two and three, fractional block four, original town of Waverly, Iowa, is platted by William P. Harmon and vacated alley between said lots for the parking lot on First Street Southeast across from Waverly Historic Lofts from Future Waverly Development LLC. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution 1904, approving acceptance of deed of four lots two and three, fractional block four, original town of Waverly, Iowa, is platted by William P. Harmon and the vacated alley between said lots for the parking lot on First Street Southeast across from Waverly Historic Lofts. Lofts subject to reversion clause and first right of refusal to grant or future Waverly Development LLC for the consideration of $1.
Second.
Motion made in second, council discussion.
Again, this is just kinda finalizing part of what the purchaser development agreement was for restoring laws.
We're getting our deed for the parking lot, for the two-thirds of the parking lot.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I had a question about the other third that's owned by the bank and what kind of discussions we've had with them.
The bank gave us permission to use it as a public lot during the construction project for the last two years and they are, right now, the, the bank is in transition and so we're waiting and one of the bank officers here has indicated that we will raise that issue with them at the appropriate time when they take control of the bank. We're really just asking for either the same type of deed or a lease from them for, for no money, just to maintain it. And then their customers can use it as a public lot so that we're not trying to differentiate what part is what. And it can all be considered one city lot, even if we're leasing part of it and owning part of it. That's the way we have worked it out with the bank so far.
So right now, does the city maintain the entire thing or just the south two-thirds?
Well, we maintain the whole thing, based on our agreement with the bank to allow us to use the whole thing and sign it as a city parking lot. And we, we assume that that's what'll still happen. We'd like to have them give it to us with the same reversionary, but we understand if they decide they don't want to do it that way and we'll take the lease as long as we can get it.
I didn't look at this lot, but what, what kinda shape is it in? Is it, are we gonna do a lot of repair work on it?
Well, we already did.
We did.
Well, we did a little work. Our own people did the work. We didn't, we didn't outside.
We did a lot of clearing of brush and just kinda trying to make it...
Okay, but I mean, the concrete, the lot's been there for a number of years now and, you know, deterioration and potholes and I don't wanna end up that we take ownership of this and we have to spend $50,000 and re, resemening parts of it out.
Well, if, if we take ownership, we'll only, we'll only repair the part that is ours without an agreement from the bank. I mean, we want a public parking lot in this area, especially with the new development coming downtown, with the new Kuna building, you know, that apartment building coming on with the theater redevelopment that we hope is gonna happen. All these things mean that we need more parking downtown and especially in this general area, so it was really important for us to, to make sure we could ensure that that happened and that we didn't get another condo building on that lot instead of a parking lot.
Is this lot going to have prohibit overnight parking?
It is gonna be a 24-hour lot like the other lots.
So you can have 24-hour parking?
Yes.
So basically, it's gonna be used as a lot for the people that live in the, the lofts?
Well, we're thinking more because they have parking spaces on their side.
They'll have closer parking for them on that site, so it could be for someone visiting there, it could be for a variety of things.
Could be some of the upper story people downtown that don't have lots, that don't have a, a parking place. There, there's people down there that are living in the apartments that don't always have a place to be. We think it's good to just add more, more spaces downtown whenever we can and this one didn't cost us a whole lot, so.
I think it's gonna be used by people who wanna go to the theater if we ever get it open.
And it, it was used quite a bit more than we expected, I think, during the, the construction project and since then, because I think the apartment people are still kinda discovering that that's a possibility, not just a public lot over by the hotel.
I think it'll be used during Christmas on Main Street, trick-or-treating on Main Street.
It's filled then. And, and we lit it up too. We, we actually got the, the two, the streetlights going in there and that's, we wanted to have it safe and we got it cleaned up. Mostly it was just cleaning it up because there was a lot of dirt that was on top of the, the asphalt that was already there, so it, it's in pretty good shape for use. We'll still have to do something to it in the next couple of years.
I'm, I'm just a little bit hesitant about this because I think it's a long way from downtown to, for people to park. I mean, it's two or three blocks off of Bremer Avenue. I, I hate to have the city obligate itself to maintaining and, and snow removal and everything else in a parking lot that's gonna be primarily for the use of the, the residents in the loft because I think that's what's gonna end up happening.
But they've got parking on the other side.
They have parking in the back, yeah.
I think it's, I agree with Mike, I think it's gonna be used. It's just a block and a half from Bremer Avenue.
People don't like to walk very far. I guess I would feel more comfortable with it if it were, you know.
But you know, if they're talking about developing the upper story of the theater, where are all those people gonna park? They're gonna be parking back there.
It's kinda what we're thinking.
Yeah.
And we're, we're trying to encourage people to walk.
Look at it as a health benefit.
Yeah, look at it as a health benefit.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I've noted my, my skepticism, so I'll let it go at that.
I don't think it's gonna be the first parking lot to fill up, but I don't think it's going to be empty all the time. I mean, I think more parking downtown is always good, even if you have some areas that are very popular and other, well, okay, the, the parking lot behind cobblestones fill, let's check out this other parking lot, see if there's anything there, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just hope we don't pay much more than a dollar for the rest of it, for the, for the north third.
Maybe we can get them down to 50 cents.
Maybe we can get it for free.
Exactly.
Yeah, so consideration for legal transactions.
I mean, that's one of the, one of the main lots when King Mutual had the building and the bank was very easy to work with, so I, even if the bank chooses to retain their parking lot or their stalls in there, I don't think there's gonna be an issue with co-use, so.
Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Wattstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Resolution 1904, accepting deed for lots two, three and fractional block four from the original town of Waverly, carried seven zero. Resolution 1905, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the 2019 vehicle and trail bridge inspections. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution 19-05, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the 2019 vehicle and trail bridge inspections on an hourly not-to-exceed fee of $8,500, including expenses.
Second.
Motion made in second, council discussion.
The only thing I wanted to clarify is that it's not an hourly fee of $8,500, which it sorta sounds like right there. It's a total of 85 to be billed hourly.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. I was thinking exactly the same.
Yeah, I had to read the other document to realize that.
We wrote that one, not that one, so it's, it's okay. It's gonna be fine. We have to have the inspections, they're mandatory, so they've done a very good job for us in the past years and I think they'll continue to do so.
Just a one curiosity question, I guess, more than anything. Why did we retain the building deck on Big Six?
That I don't know. Mike, if you could elaborate on that?
Very brief history there.
Very prior, much prior to my time, so I'm not sure myself.
I have the same question.
That's what the council wanted.
Okay.
Wasn't it city property already, though?
The building was.
Because where does the private property end?
If anybody would have just retained it.
There was quite the network of wooden stairs and platforms at the back of each one of the six buildings. Architecturally, they wanted to, you know, with the design of the plaza and having accessibility to the back of buildings at the first floor level, the decision was made to do this. I think at the time, it was thought that this would be more of a hangout, gathering place, more public use beyond the fishermen.
Yeah, until they put all the garbage cans there. Right.
Yeah, well, I've got, I'm quoting here, what I would like to point out is, there's, I did include the map in here of, this comes off of a DOT portal website, and it's kind of interesting, you can look at, identify every bridge in the state of Iowa, whether it's state-owned, county-owned, or city-owned. This is a snapshot of the area. This does include the state-owned bridge on Bremer, on Iowa Highway 3, Bremer Avenue. Also has a couple of the county bridges shown in here, but.
You know, most of them are on the dry run. I would hope that those bridges are okay, since they're only about two years old.
Right, and so what is a bridge, or what requires inspection? It's any span greater than 20 feet. And so, like on the dry run, we have a triple 12-foot by 7-foot box culvert, so they're, each tube is 12 feet wide, 7 feet tall, but when you have a triple, it's 36 feet. That's how they treat that. It's not the span distance, it's the total distance, and that's why we get the 36 feet on a lot of these driver and tree culverts. So we are required to do that every two years. It has a federal requirement that is administered by the state that we must abide by. The trail bridges are not on the federal bridge program. Only vehicle bridges are. But we feel it's important to maintain the history of the condition of our trail bridges, and so we do those every four years. And then this year, we've added in the deck on the Big Six. As seen in the photograph here, we are starting to see some, this is kind of referred to as pack rust, except that interface, right, where the steel post supports the concrete, and this caught our attention this year, and we said, let's add that to the inspection. We should have a report, I think, in March or April, and we'll set that up for a study session where we'll do a brief overview. Again, there's not going to be a whole lot to talk about in regards to the back culverts on the Grand Ron, but I do want to review the council findings on the Big Six deck. And.
So if that needs repair, that back deck, is that solely a city cost, or is it shared with the property owners?
It would probably be solely of the city's cost, if repairs were needed.
I'm just curious, who then owns all that land where the tall grasses are planted and the concrete and all that?
City does.
We could try to sell it, but they won't really let us. It's that whole federal fud, buy-out thing, so.
All right, it's nice.
That's my daughter's climbing hill.
Yeah, I like it.
We'll make sure and keep it, then.
The garbage cans are a little bit.
Yeah.
Any other, just council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 1905, for inspection of vehicle trail bridges and culverts and the deck, carried seven zero. Third and final reading of ordinance 1053, and ordinance amending the current Waverly TIF ordinance 1025, in connection with the adoption of amendment number three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
Move approval is read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second, and council discussion.
Nothing's changed here, right?
No, the TIF ordinance, we're removing the properties that A through G on the second part, and then we're only adding back in right now A and B, which is the Tri-B Bush property and Walker property. We're not adding in the city three, curparcell, and the business park yet. We don't have any reason to add it at this time. We're going to be having another one coming up, because we have to go through that next step again, so we can do it then if we need to do it.
So was there something that changed, that you decided to take that part out, or?
No, it, we never intended to put that, we put it into the plan, but we didn't intend to put it in the TIF ordinance, because we don't want to start the 20-year running. Because there's no, there's no current plan for it.
So nothing's changed since the second reading?
Right, nothing has changed since the second reading, that's correct.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Cher.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Resolution, or ordinance 1053, amending the, or adopting the amendment three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan, is carried seven zero. First reading of ordinance 1055, an ordinance amending section 84.1, obstructions prohibited, and section 84.2, obstructions, awnings of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
Move approval is read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I assume this is kind of in response to the problems we had with the posts supporting the awnings in front of kind of craw daddy on West.
Well, let's start with the first one, though. 84.1 is about obstructions in the street, and it's been commonly used for taking care of issues where people do a lot of track out or leave things on the surface of the road. And we wanted to put some teeth in that, because right now, it's either municipal infraction, which is a very complicated, fairly complicated thing, and we decided we wanted to set an offensive violation at $100 for the first offense, so we get people's attention if they're leaving things in the street, gravel, chunks, those kinds of things. We shouldn't have to do that, because it should be a process where we give warnings until we get compliance, but we want to have some ability to be nimble with that and not have to do a complicated process. And we wanted to clarify that we meant gravel, soil, manure, refuse, those kinds of things. The second section is the, is really what I call the streetscape section. We've kind of made that into, we want them to use the sidewalks on special occasions, and that it's okay if it has a fairly, it's some kind of obstruction, you know, placing tables in the middle of the sidewalk, making people walk around it, that kind of thing. That's okay during those special events that the chamber has. So those are fairly small number a year, but it really is valuable to have people wander through the aisles and basically around the tables and around the displays. So we want to make sure that that was okay for those types of situations only. And then the third one is what we, is the streetscape section on allowing the business owners to use the four-foot squares in front of their business to put in displays. And we just want to make sure that everybody understood that that was okay, that's accepted, that we want them to do that, that we encourage them to do that, that we now have an eight-foot wide, ADA-compliant sidewalk that we want people to use and rely upon, that being clear most of the time, other than the sales, the big sale days. So we kind of want to make that clear, that we're not telling people they shouldn't do that. In fact, we've had five or six businesses that have been doing that regularly for the last couple of years, and it really works nice. And what we want to encourage is all of them to do it, a lot of them to do it, because it really adds eye appeal, attractiveness, those kinds of things, so that people are wanting to see what's going on downtown, they want to get out and walk the sidewalks. Then 84.2 dealt with, originally dealt with awnings. And what we did there is just reinforce that all of our buildings that we look at having awnings on are on Bremer Avenue, and the DOT basically made it clear that they didn't want us letting people use the right-of-way for supporting awnings. So we just added it to this particular section, so that they can have an awning, and it can be hanging off the building, but it just can't be supported by a support structure on the right-of-way. So that's how we took that advantage. I know one of the concerns I got from somebody on the council was, why do we want it more than 10 feet from the building? And I can easily put back in no more than 10 feet and not over the street, and so we could actually put in the 10-foot requirement if we wanted to do that. I just left it open to say, you know, that's 16 foot if they went out to the sidewalk, generally speaking for most of those buildings, that's probably not going to happen.
But I mean, and even from a construction point of view, I mean, wouldn't that have to be?
It's probably not possible.
Supported somewhere.
That's a patent lever.
Yeah, an engineering marvel.
Yeah.
So I would probably say, I would leave, I would probably put back in the 10-foot limitation that was already in there to start with, and just say, we'll just put that back in for the second reading, if that's what you want me to do. I mean, you can approve it without this tonight, so we don't have to change things, but I'll put it in for the second reading at 10 foot, if you all feel that that's a good thing to do.
Okay.
So you put something in for the second reading, then is that the second reading, or do we have to start over if you make a change?
We can change things through the second, in the readings, because that's kind of why you do three readings, because if, the only one that counts is the third.
Third, okay, all right.
I don't have a problem with keeping the 10-foot restriction out. I don't see that there's really any need to have that in there. It seems like a superfluous restriction. If somebody wants to have an awning that goes 11 feet, more power to them, as long as it doesn't obstruct anything, that's my feeling on it. So I, I don't care either way, but I just don't think there's a reason to have 10 feet in there and leave it out, and I don't think it affects anything. I do have two comments, though, that I'd like to make. The first one, and I'm sorry, this is kind of wordsmithing, but 84.1A, you're prohibiting gravel twice on there, gravel, soil, gravel, manure.
We really don't want that.
You don't like gravel.
Their tenant sitting there seemed a little excessive, so we put it there.
Only do it twice.
I should put small gravel and large gravel.
But I do have just a clarification, though, on section C, because these are talking about the things that are accepted along west and east Bremer Avenue from Fifth Street West to Fourth Street East. And then the second sentence talks about decorations, plantings, promotional items may also be placed by merchants near storefronts in the downtown, but shall not extend into the sidewalk. Now, is downtown a more expansive definition than what you're doing on Bremer Avenue? The reason I'm asking that, for my specific purpose, is in our building, we don't have a, well, we, our building opens on the Second Street, and we typically have some planters or something like that on Second Street, which if that resolution only allows things on Bremer Avenue, on the Bremer Avenue sidewalks, then anybody that's not on Bremer Avenue would not be able to have anything outside their storefront. So downtown means the entire downtown area, I don't have a problem with it.
That was my intent, I guess I didn't make it that explicit, because I think that the stores that are affronted, fronting on, may have a side, and I think the same rule would apply to the side of those businesses that have affrontage.
Okay, so downtown means downtown, not just specifically Bremer Avenue?
Within a block of Bremer Avenue, yeah.
Can you look at the other items? You're talking benches and planters and trees, all the large, large things that we're wanting putting in public art. That's where it wanted to be specific along Bremer Avenue itself, to keep that consistent. But if you have smaller items, decoration center in the side streets, I think that was kind of the gist of why it was.
There are trees, there are trees on the side streets, though.
Some of them.
In the downtown area, so this wouldn't prohibit that, I mean, we don't have to cut those trees down.
And it's, they're usually narrower than sidewalks on the side streets, so we wouldn't, we would just want to make sure it wasn't an obstruction.
Right, yeah, and I think that's the intention.
Right.
Do we go with the TIF definition, that kind of, I think it extends like a block north and south, too, or something like that?
In fact, I can add that, too.
Yeah.
Except that I don't know if we're going, do we want four feet on each side? I mean, it's one thing to put a little potter on the corner, four feet becomes more when you only have 12 feet, or when you only have eight feet.
Well, one way around that would just be to, instead of say that you can have it with four feet from the building, would be that you have to allow six feet or eight feet of sidewalk access, do it the other way.
With regard to the construction part, who's going to enforce that? Who's going to be inspecting construction sites and then enforcing it?
Like, who knows that actually stay up?
No, I mean, the gravel, gravel.
Actually, actually, Rachel's our code enforcement officer.
Okay, so she'd be out there. And does this apply to the sidewalk that's between the hotel and the bakery?
No, because that area is actually owned by the hotel.
Okay.
And they gave us permission to put in the brickwork all the way through and to allow for a walk-through to get to the back parking lot, which we've now, I think, completed with a connection to the parking lot. And that way, it was intended to be use of that space, so they wouldn't have to do so much maintenance over there, and I think it was nice for them and nice for us.
Be nice to put little tables out there for the bakery.
They're talking about, streetscape may, the streetscape project may look at something in that area, too. Except the park lot, yeah.
So I'm looking at our 84.1A a second time, and I'm wondering, am I going to get in trouble for having the leaves from my trees falling into the street? Maybe. I mean, is that how I read this?
It's interesting, because I wouldn't say that if they're falling there, that they are necessarily your fault, but if you winrow them into the street.
Well, I mean, but it says, you know, allowed to be placed.
Yeah, well.
It's placed, not falling. I don't think it is intended for.
We're holding the trees harmless. They place them there, it's okay.
Normal, they fall in.
But if you place them there.
But I read it, I mean, as I was reading it, I was thinking of people who might, like, put all their leaves in the other.
Right, I mean, you're not supposed to put your leaves into there, but if they blow in there, I mean, do you need to put up some sort of fencing to keep your leaves from blowing into the street?
I think you just call Rachel ahead of time and let her know your leaves are finally.
Speaking from experience, because I did live in a house that had giant trees all around it, and we had to do all that, it's hard to keep that winrow when you're waiting for the city to come pick up your leaves. And you want to keep it right next to the curb, because we want it as close as we can so we can get the equipment to it. But we also want you to make every effort to keep them out of the gutter, if you can. Just every, just make the effort to try to do it as best you can.
I hope they don't enforce anything about leaves in the street, because we have lots of leaves in the street. In the parks. I've always referred to my property as a leaf exporting property, so.
What's your answer?
So so long as my leaves make it to the neighbor's yard, I'm okay, but if they stop in the street, I'm in trouble.
First floor, we'll get the map.
Yeah, I'd say we should hope.
That'd be great.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 1055, amending, an ordinance amending section 84.1 and 84.2, proved seven zero. Next item, approval of Merrill appointments. Richard Purcell reappointed to the Bremer County E911 Service Board for a term ending in January 2020. Ron Stolberg is reappointed to the Municipal Housing Commission for a term ending January 2021. Kathy McClung is reappointed to the Municipal Housing Commission for a term ending January 2021. Vicki Green reappointed to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending May 2025. John Tharp reappointed to the Cable Telecommunications Commission for a term ending February 2024. Matt Nelson replacing John Hines on the Cable Telecommunications Commission for a term ending February 2023. Ron Rushee is reappointed to the Golf Course Commission for a term ending January 2022. Tasha Burrell is appointed to the Golf Course Commission for a term ending January 2022. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Council discussion. Questions? All those in favor of mayoral appointments, say yes. Appointments are confirmed, seven, or 7-0. Approval of the mayor, may, mayoral, mayor, pro temp. Edie Walstein is asked to be appointed, reappointed as mayor pro temp. Entertained a motion, please.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, I'm sorry. Getting to be a long week. All those in favor of mayor pro temp appointment, say yes. Opposed? Mayor pro temp is approved. Approval of council liaisons to the boards and commissions. Telecommunications commission, Tim Kangas. Municipal housing, Rod Dredkow. Economic development, Dan McKenzie. Waverly senior center, Ann Rothie. Electric utility board of trustees, Edie Walstein. Public safety board, voting member, Dan McKenzie and Rod Dredkow. Veterans tribute, Ann Rothie. Waverly heritage days, Ann Rothie. Hazardous mitigation and river use commission is not functioning any longer. Waverly municipal ban, Tim Kangas. Community energy advisory team, not needed. Waverly public library board, Mike Shear. Airport commission, Tim Kangas. Historic preservation commission, Brian Bergen. Golf course commission, Ann Rothie. Leisure services commission, Brian Bergen. The W advisory board, voting member, Mike Shear. Planning zoning commission, Edith Walstein. Zoning board of adjustment, Tim Kangas. Fall time and task force, Dan McKenzie.
Your honor, I think you failed to include waiver chamber of commerce.
I may have done that, I apologize. And that's Dan McKenzie. Entertained a motion, and a second.
I will move approval of the council liaisons to the board commissions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Just maybe a thought, sort of, I know when the hazard mitigation river use commission was set up, it was really focused on flooding and the watershed, that type of thing. I, just as you're reading through this, it struck me that we're continually trying to promote the river as an asset in the community, but we never really do anything to do that. I just happened to be contacted by a vigil that lives along the river, close to where we just approved a preliminary plot and that, and he had some good feedback on, okay, now we're putting more houses on the river, it's going to get more use, and there's already congestion, some near misses, those type of things. I'm wondering if we could retool that just to be the River Use Commission, and get some folks that really have a passion about using the river for recreation, and see if they can bring forward some idea of how to promote it, use it, just so that we can get some traction on longstanding.
I think when that commission ended, that they referred all those to the leisure services commission.
I want to say we rolled that into leisure services.
So maybe it just needs to be, maybe a subcommittee on leisure service or something. Just put a little more, again, I think there's more than a handful of folks out there that have a passion about the river, and if they would get invited to deal just with the river, we may get them to buy into that versus being part of a bigger, bigger service commission or something like that, so, just an idea.
Certainly can be an item for discussion, and even Tab can deal, work with it on his, and maybe expand it, so as suggested, a subcommittee that would work through that, so. Any other comments? All those in favor, say yes. Council liaisons for calendar year 2019 are hereby approved. Reports from boards and commissions. Board of adjustment commission minutes June 11, 2018, received into record. Economic development commission minutes October 9, 2018, received into record. Historic preservation commission minutes October 22, 2018, received into record. Airport commission minutes November 8, 2018, received into record. Planning and zoning commission minutes November 8, 2018, received into record. Library board of trustees minutes November 13, 2018, received into record. Leisure services commission minutes December 10, 2018, received into record. Monthly financials, received into record. Senior calendar for January 2019, received into record. Staff comments.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to remind the citizens that we are currently taking applications for the Citizens Police Academy. We are ninth year of doing that, and so if anybody is interested and they would like to participate, please get your application in. It is, the deadline's not until January 31, but it is a first come, first served, unqualified applicant, so you do want to get your app in. Those aren't familiar with the program, it is a 10-week program. We meet on Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I know it seems like a long time, and, but those that have participated say it does go quickly. It is mostly interactive, so it does not drag on, so it is, our coined phrase is, they look behind the badge, and we truly talk about and discuss every topic that the citizens want to do, so, again, if you want to participate, please let us know, and we'll take applications online, by email, and we do have them at the law center.
And is getting tased optional?
It is optional.
I did not get tased when I did it, so I know it's optional.
Smart man.
Any other staff comments?
I think it's all we have, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you. City council comments?
I wanted to come back to John Campbell's question during the public comment time. I was wondering, I don't want to make too much work, so don't take this the wrong way, but would it be possible for, for staff to, you know, whether it's information from Chief of Police, or, you know, any information you might have on that stretch, and the pros and cons of the speed limit there, just to bring us up to speed in terms of your thinking on it, so that those of us who want to respond to John can get back to him. I don't know, you know, I haven't, I don't know if it's, he says he hasn't heard from anybody in six months, and that would be a shame if that's true. We probably should, should respond to him somehow.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be going to have a beer at the Wooden Foot after the meeting, anyone is free to join me. I also want to acknowledge that for the New Year's Eve, I heard a few fireworks going off. Didn't keep me up late. I was in bed by 10:00 and didn't wake me up at New Year's at midnight, so I'm pleased to see that our, our citizens were able to responsibly enjoy fireworks at New Year's Eve, and that was kind of the end of it, as near as I can tell.
I think that's news, really, that you're in bed by 10:00 on New Year's Eve.
I am that morning, sorry.
Any other council comments? I have none. Entertained a motion for adjournment.
Second adjournment.
All those in favor, say yes. Opposed? Clear adjourn.